Okay, the time is now seven thirty-three, and I will call our Downhill Grove Public Library Board of Library Trustees to order. And just to note, we are still operating in the Public Act one oh one dash zero six four zero. This meeting is technically by remote attendance, and so all votes will be taken by roll call. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Dorian, yes. Trustee DeGan, yes. Trustee Humphries?
Here.
Trustee Quintia?
Here.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Grayber.
Here, thank you very much. We're now on to Agenda Item number three. A welcome to our visitors. I'd like to appreciate your interest in the library. Thank you. We're now on to Agenda Item number four, approval of last month's minutes. We've got two sets of minutes, and we'll start with Agenda Item four A, the May twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one regular meeting minutes. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding last month's minutes?
I'll need to approve last month's minutes. I will say.
Do we have a motion to approve last month's minutes that has been seconded? Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Dorian? Yes. Trustee DeGan? Yes. Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Quintia? Yes. Trustee Stapleton? Yes. President Grayber.
Yes, thank you very much. The May twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one minutes have been approved. We're now on to Agenda Item four B, the June first, twenty-twenty-one committee of the whole meeting. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding the minutes for the June first, twenty-twenty-one committee of the whole meeting?
I will motion to approve the minutes from the committee of the whole meeting, um, June first.
Sorry. Okay, we have a motion to approve the June first, twenty-twenty-one committee of the whole meeting minutes that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Dorian? Yes. Trustee DeGan? Yes. Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Quintia? Yes. Trustee Stapleton? Yes. President Grayber.
Yes, thank you very much, Caitlin. The June first, twenty-twenty-one committee of the whole meeting minutes that have been approved. We're now on to Agenda Item five A, but there are five financial matters to discuss. Would you like to sum up your thoughts?
Sure. Um, we are forty-one point six percent through the year. As you can see, the revenues are, um, still in the under ten percent. That is exactly as we expect, um, because we are awaiting our, um, most of our tax payments. There has been only one set of tax payments posted in May, and we will see the bulk of those starting rolling again in June. Um, and the expenditures are at thirty-five point three percent spent, um, which is also about as, uh, expected. We are running a little under in a couple of lines, which is always great. And, um, yeah, things are just lugging along. I do notice that in the, uh, library capital replacement fund, the next payments for the roofing project are included in this month's invoices, and then you will see the end of those, uh, in July. So that will be the final bulk payment. We have had our final walkthrough, and everything is good together.
Okay, does anyone have any questions regarding the financial matters? We have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Dorian? Yes. Trustee DeGan? Yes. Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Quintia? Trustee Stapleton? Yes. President Grayber.
Yes, thank you very much. The financial matters as presented have been approved. We are now on to Agenda Item number six, public comment on agenda items. Do we have any public comment on agenda items?
Nothing has been submitted on my part.
Okay. Thank you. We're now on to Agenda Item number seven, public comment on other library business. Do we have any comments either submitted?
Nothing submitted.
Thank you very much. We're now on to Agenda Item eight A. I'm very excited to learn more about Girl Scout troop garden project presentation.
So Leader Kelly Meyer, um, sent us this wonderful video that our Girl Scout troop, um, had done. They did a presentation about their work on our native garden and planting with, um, Sue Farley and our own Don Martin.
Hello, I'm Megan, and I am so excited to tell you about our Girl Scout troop and our Bronze Award project. We are all fifth graders from Pierce County Elementary School, so we're ten and eleven years old. And our Girl Scout troop started six years ago. Our troop has twelve members, and seven of us decided to service projects this spring called the Bronze Award. The seven girls on our team are me, Patty, Annie, Ella, Michaela, Kria, and Samantha. Uh, later is my mom, Miss Meyer.
Sir Kaya, I thought we could tell them that about Bronze Award.
I remember learning about it last year when Miss Meyer was telling us about things we could do as our Girl Scout juniors. We are different levels of service awards, and our Girl Scout Bronze would be yours for the fifth grade. It is, and it is a group project. We learned to identify areas where people in our community can work together as a team. You may have also heard about the Silver and Gold Awards in Girl Scouting. Silver is a part of our service project and goes into the dual service project for our other Girl Scouts. There are several steps to getting ready for it, but an important part is that it has some kind of lasting impact.
I, I'm Annie, and I'd like to tell you about how we started on the project for our program. We spent quite a lot of time brainstorming together. We had all kinds of ideas from working with the homeless and the homeless population, helping improve animal welfare and exploring composting programs in our community. We had about eleven different ideas and used a few processes to finally decide what to do. Actually, when we entered the depth of two, working with homeless population and native carving, we reached out to some local experts to help us decide. One of the vendors was the Fresh Compensational Community Kitchen across the street. We finally decided to do the Native Prairie Life Library. The staff showed us an available spot that was perfect on our side of the village. We were excited to help bring the long-lasting use of the community of the plants that are great for our local wildlife.
Hi, I'm Samantha, and this was the planning process. First, I reached out to Mrs. Polly, and she was available to help. Then she showed us a bunch of options, and we decided what to plan. Next, we made a plan. We met four different times to do the work. The work included a little meeting, lots of digging, some watering, and some mulching. Here you see a photo of our plan. We planted ten species. Here are a few photos of us planting.
Here are some pictures of us at Belmont Prairie. We visited Belmont Prairie to learn more about native plants. Mr. Lance is a local expert and showed us around. We first learned of awareness scale as a ten being the most rare and one being very common. We were fortunate enough to see some nines. The nine we saw were rattlesnake master and furry violet. We also saw Maori cocoon, which is an eight. Fun fact, twenty-two million acres of land on Wallace Prairie, and now only two thousand five hundred remain, and some of it, some of the best of them down in Grove.
Patty, I would like to talk about what we learned about native plants.
This whole process, we learned about a lot about native plants and want to share a few of those lessons with you. First, native plants are very used to the, used to the weather here, so tend to be easier to grow. Native plants also have really deep roots that help them survive even when there isn't much rain, or in the case of the native prairie, when there is a fire. Last, these plants are great for our local insects, including butterflies, moths, and worms. By the way, Samantha mentioned tend to be cheaply planted. Here are our pictures of some of them in Grove. Be on my tab.
I'm feeling I'd like to talk today. It's very important to give a big thanks to the growers that helped make our project possible. Thank you to the library staff for your enthusiasm and all your help, especially Ian Orr, who helped us get started, and John Martin, who helped us shoot, who helped, and shared it on, at, on every step. Many thanks to Master Bonnie Sufoli of the Green Growers. She's buying so much of the native garden at the library. She donated the majority of the permits to the garden. She is patient and kind and a community treasure. Thank you to our parents who are willing to attend a lot of, a lot of the year, and we need to get our project done. Thank you to our leader, Mrs. Meyer, for investing time and energy in us. Every time we return to the library, we will notice our garden has, our garden has died before we are done. Thank you.
It was a delight to work with, um, John Martin, uh, is our building operations assistant, and he works primarily on our outdoor landscaping and with the Green Growers. So a huge shout out to Sue Farley, who is always, um, making us look better on the outside of the library and the driving doors behind our, um, monarch waste station and pollinator gardens. And this simply extends some of those wonderful plantings into the area back by our, um, by the parking lot. We started with the replanting upfront.
And have your attention, a library will be closing in fifteen minutes.
They didn't go there in the spring, um, apparently in May. It was, how long was there? In the library preparation day, it was ten minutes and then it's like, and those girls were first.
Well, I just noticed that there is definitely still a little bit of this one. So it was, it's not yet kind of seen, you know, it's, um, so it's fantastic.
Does anyone have any?
Just another shout out to Sue and to Ian and John and a few, I just struck a few other people from our staff and folks wanting to help me with this. These girls will remember it for a long and so.
Thank you. We're now on to Agenda Item eight B, the Rotary Grow Fest, Grow Fest Special Edition, Close Can Say Safe Location. Close in on the detail.
All right, so Rotary Grow Fest is coming back with the special edition. When I wrote this, we weren't quite sure on the timing of everything. So the recommendation has changed a little bit. Dave, of course, as the, um, entertainment chair of, or, and the stage manager for the Grow Fest is key in our information gathering and also in making sure that our acting as a safe location goes smoothly. Um, we have been a safe location for several years prior to, um, COVID closing the fest completely in twenty-twenty. So this is a real, that portion is not really a change from prior years. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of it. So this year's special edition will be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. On Thursday, the fest opens at five o'clock with the first band going on at seven fifteen. On Friday, it opens at three with the first band going on at five. Saturday, opening at three, first band at four thirty, and Sunday, opening at three with the first band at five forty-five. Now, after talking to the management team, um, once we have that, uh, schedule in, in hand, there was some discussion about closing at least an hour before the bands start, um, in order to, generally because our foot traffic goes down to almost nothing as soon as the bands begin. This is from our past practice in all of the Rotary Grow Fest. Um, and generally, parking is, parking is a nightmare. Traffic is a nightmare because they close down streets, they're one-way streets. You know, folks just have trouble getting physically to the library during that time. So, um, we are normally open until nine P M. on Thursday and Friday, and only till five on Saturday and Sunday. So at this point, I believe that my recommendation, that my recommendation to you is that we close, um, at six or seven P M. on, um, on Thursday and Friday, and then I, we can be open approximately regular, be open our regular hours on Saturday and Sunday. Since we're only open nine to five on Friday, or, excuse me, on Saturday, and one to five on Sunday.
You said Thursday and Friday, six to seven?
Well, I.
Maybe eight.
Maybe close at six o'clock, maybe close at seven o'clock. I'm.
Not sure.
Yeah, so I wanted to put it to you on your opinion on, uh, the most appropriate times to close.
And then what time does some of the bands begin on Sunday?
Five forty-five. So it would be forty-five minutes after we close, which is why I was. And generally, on Sunday, we do have, if most of our folks work, a single four-hour shift. Our biggest issue tends to be, um, like on Saturday, we had traditionally closed at one o'clock because the fest was opening by noon. There were bands happening by mid-afternoon, and we would typically have a change of shift at one o'clock, and they would be unable to find somewhere to park, anywhere within basically half a mile of downtown. So that was why we had started closing both entirely on the Sunday afternoon and for the Saturday of the fest. This is a much, this special edition is a much smaller event. But we really don't know what to expect, and that's the hardest part. You know, do we, do we close at six o'clock on both of those days? Do we close at five? Uh, our typical change of shift happens at one o'clock and five o'clock when we are closed, or when we're open until nine P M.
Me, my general thought is that even though it's a smaller event, there's a lot of people who've been penned up for the past year, were appointed to be coming downtown to spend time here, maybe for the, for the Grow Fest, maybe for other, you know, just part of the, you know, downtown. And so I was leaning for a six, or you said six or seven. Because of that, and I was thinking, well, because we're the same shape on Thursday and Friday, but I think just to keep it simple, just keeping the vote is the same at five, at five o'clock is the natural. Whether it's five or six for nine or seven, it's more natural to close at five than that. To me, seems like more logical way to go.
Then our full-timers would do a single daytime shift on those days.
Just maybe to give you a quick idea, it is scaled back from normal in some respects and not in other respects. Main Street will be closed, but there will be no street fair on Main Street. In other words, there will be no booths, restaurants, businesses, booths, because the existing restaurants on Main Street are already set up into the street in order for, for safety and other reasons, it wasn't reasonable to put a street fair on Main Street. Plus, probably wanting to support the businesses that were there, especially this year. There will be amusement rides, primarily a tour, that's pretty much as normal, pretty much as normal. Um, there will be no car show on Sundays. The, there will be bands playing on Thursday night, which is something that would be fast. It's only Friday, Saturday, Sunday. But in order to try to expand the opportunity a little bit for revenue, we decided to go to be more part of the road. I'm sure we're at our, we're trying to, uh, increase the opportunities for revenue a little bit because as you recall, all of the revenues from Grow Fest, probably as charitable grants back into the community. Um, there will normally, some activity begins earlier in the afternoon, especially Saturday and Sunday. Some extend on Thursday and Friday also. Things are going to start later, as you heard Julie say, on, the, the beer garden or the entertainment area will not open until five o'clock on Thursday. The first band at seven fifteen, I won't even count that. Um, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, the area will open at three. I'm even surprised they have different hours. I'm just talking about this area right here, the ticketed area, and, uh, but on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, the, the band start somewhere around five o'clock. And, um, I think this is reasonable. It is, we don't know how many people will be here during the peeps, but the peeps start later. We hope that the community wants this and will, will support it so we can make our charitable grants for the community and also people that have been asking us, are you going to do it? And really, this is kind of, it's a fun party for the village.
And the effect of the carnival on parking is another huge one, and that's where the question comes in. On Saturday and Sunday, because that tends to be key for the carnival. And so we really just don't know what to expect. So my initial thought was to go with our regular Grow Fest hours, which would be early closing, um, on the nights of the bands, and then one o'clock on Saturday. So only be open at nine to one, and then closing entirely on Sunday.
And just that no one was. The self-checks for the first floor service desk at this time. Again, the library will be closing in five minutes. Thank you.
About five or six, maybe let's say five, Thursday and Friday, but then four minutes or five on Saturday, Sunday.
Well, um, I was not, I'm sorry, Dave, I must have misunderstood that the carnival has different hours.
The carnival, yeah. I don't, I don't have a carnival.
And it wasn't on the website.
They, uh, you know, some things aren't like, some things haven't been firmly decided. Realize this just happened three weeks, and it only got approved by the village the other last week. So things are still in bitter flux, but, um, yeah, the carnival has set people a little bit longer hours than the entertainment area, but the carnival is primarily more on the front. Forest Avenue will be wide open, well, it's still building, for a fact. Soul Curves, that's all it is. Main Street will be closed, but, um, well, it's not so.
It is primarily the parking issues caused by people going to the carnival. And all parking being a safe place.
Curiously, the parking lot, for some reason, never totally filled this year. Yet there are fewer people in the middle of the day during the Grow Fest than where I do. I mean, it's, it's, now, normally, I would just, you know, encourage us to find the times and establish that, but I'm just wondering, it, it, the Grow Fest is like in the middle of August, right? And so could we table this?
We could table this, um, and the most difficult part about that is that our, um, our departments tend to schedule a month in advance. So they will be working on the August schedule at the end of the month.
So you said the shifts are based, or one and five?
Tend to be.
So what, I mean, if you were saying that libraries will be open at six, how would you even do that?
They would simply, they would simply make a little bit different level of life for the folks.
It would be helpful, I can probably get, I'll, should we comment out this, or, you can, to make a difference to us tonight?
I think it's okay to approve it in July. Oh, no, this year, staff schedules.
Yeah. What more we could do?
We could, we could tentatively approve, or, or you can just give me the authority once we figure out what it is.
That's what I would, I would, finally, I'm not sure that this should be kind of an action that is traditionally happens.
I, I, I would like if possible, I mean, I like the first alternative because we're open on that, on those four days. So some of this is that they come in at six or seven on Thursday, Friday, they come back in, you know, following that. But if it doesn't, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, so.
I don't believe the museum project would be open way earlier, like an open at ten, twenty.
Right. If I remember correctly from prior years, at least one of those days, um, they do the wristbands for, like, June the third or something.
And it's Friday.
Yeah.
We are, oh, yeah. That, that is, on Thursday, and sometimes it's on Sunday.
So that, that is also a consideration because it doesn't have to be.
One change this year is that all hours that are, that are open will be ticketed. There won't be a free period. This year, by the way, this is all just this year, and here I have back to.
Right. So, so could we move to authorize you to establish the hours for that Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday as you hopefully have light up Rotary Grow Fest?
I move that.
Okay.
The library is now closed. The library opens tomorrow.
Forble. As long as Caitlin doesn't know.
It's not a deal.
Right here.
Is this like included in the safe location too?
Oh, yes, and, and active as a safe location.
Safe location is just in case storms, or, or we got clear, and find a safe location. Pleasantly, we're using all, we're using.
Okay, there's been a motion to authorize Julie to establish library hours during, during Grow Fest as she needs appropriate, um, and to approve the use of the library as a safe location. And that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Yes. Uh, Trustee Dorian? Yes. Trustee DeGan? Yes. Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Quintia? Yes. Trustee Stapleton? Yes. President Grayber.
Yes, thank you very much. Agenda Item eight B has, so moved and approved. We're now on to Agenda Item eight C, Training for the Library Capital Replacement Fund, the operating fund.
So as you all know, uh, this is a regular part of our budget now. It has been since our twenty-seventeen, um, capital needs assessment was done, and, and we put in place the funding plan for that. Um, we are doing fantastically well on our, um, funding plan. We are right where we expected to be. As a matter of fact, we're actually ahead of where we expected to be at this time, um, especially with this year's roofing project coming in so far under budget. So this is, um, we did get our audited, uh, financials from the village, uh, and we are doing great. So this is typically something we do right after we receive the audited financials for previous.
I think this was maybe the year or the next year, it's one of the, the wellness, I live during the course of, uh, the, you know, plan we established. And I think in, in Julie mentioned this, but this was a number that was established in, in twenty-eighteen based on what the capital needs were, and, you know, we, we, it's just, you know, something that I suppose.
And it's rolling right along, and we're hitting all of our targets.
Yep. Beautiful thing to say. It's one of the nightmares of, of, of twenty-three years ago.
I'll, oh.
Go ahead, sorry.
I'll authorize a transfer of three hundred fifty thousand dollars from the library fund to the library capital replacement fund. A second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Agenda Item eight C, the transfer of three hundred fifty thousand dollars to the library capital replacement fund, the operating fund, that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Dorian? Yes. Trustee DeGan? Yes. Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Quintia? Yes. Trustee Stapleton? Yes. President Grayber.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved of the transfer described in Agenda Item eight C. We're now on to Agenda Item eight D, twenty-twenty-two salary structure.
All right, so this is the annual update of our salary structure. As you know, we overhauled our entire compensation system in twenty-nineteen and put that into place for twenty-twenty. Um, so this. So this is the second annual re-benchmarking of that salary structure. The benchmark increase for 2022 is 1.7%. And this also incorporates the Illinois minimum wage increase from $11 to $12 an hour. As you may notice, from the salary grade one, will no longer be used. The midpoint of that salary grade was below the $12 an hour minimum wage. So we, we were very fortunate in this salary schedule as there was nothing in pay grade two. So we simply moved all of those job titles up to pay grade two and grade out anything under minimum wage. So minimum wage of $12 an hour will be our minimum hiring wage for those positions, the job titles that are in salary grade two, and then going up from there. As you can see, the midpoint for salary grade two in the new schedule is 1320 an hour. So we do anticipate there will be a benchmark increase next year and that we will be able to continue with this schedule for 2023. However, in 2024, we know that it will go up yet another dollar and so we will need to work with HR source, our salary and compensation consultant again in 2023 to do and, and actually, they recommend that you do it every three to five years anyway. So we're due for a new look at that salary structure in 2023 anyway. So if anyone has any other questions, I hope for the salaries.
I think you may have misread this, because I thought that it was, I thought I had read it where there was the 1.7 benchmark.
Oh, that's the budget.
Okay.
You're, you're thinking of the merit increases in the, in the preliminary budget. This is simply the salary structure itself. This is, this is just adding the benchmark factor to the salary structure and then everyone's pay falls within.
Which, this is, this is essentially, because I, I, I thought this was seen well to me. And so, you know, we've had discussions before with the other, you know, around the other way. But this is the number that there essentially says the possibility increase based on their motion to this.
Yes. And then for actual salary increases to staff, there will be a merit increase component in budget.
I'm just talking about the recent cost of living numbers that are coming out. It's, because then that has to be updated to catch up at some point, but it's just much higher.
And we tend to lag behind because of where our budget process, the timing of our budget process.
Does anyone have any questions about the benchmark 1.7% increase? This is just across the board, 1.7.
Yes, and this is just, this isn't anybody's individual raise. This is simply the pay grades and minimums, maximums, and quartiles for each job title in the library. It, it really controls what we hire at, what the maximum for each position is. And then it gives us some benchmarks in the middle to look at, you know, if people have been here a long time, have they made it to third part, I can't, that's it.
So if it turns out by, I'm pretty far down the road, office, that the numbers were higher. Will we change this number or will we change the?
Well, it only, the, because we still, the, the number, it only be needed, I guess, to be accepted, somebody was compounding against that top number. And I know that, I don't know if this is in the budget or in this area, but I know that there's also some flexibility that we have to, to take care of those people as well. If they were compounding against top number.
And if you look at the, at the bottom, in the small type at the very bottom, any individual at the maximum of their pay grade may earn a performance bonus of up to 3% per year. This bonus is given along summer year end upon approval of a satisfactory performance by the individual supervisor. So that's, that's the accommodation we make for those folks who are compounding against a maximum. Plus, with the benchmark, when you move the whole salary schedule by 1.7%, then that maximum just moves up.
Right.
So after, those folks may have some more room now.
It could, in theory, other than appropriate circumstances, it won't exactly. It is a 1.7%. Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion to approve the 2022 salary structure?
I will approve to approve the 2022 salary structure.
Yes. We are seconded.
Seconded. Okay.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the 2022 salary structure that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with all of this?
Trustee George, yes. Trustee Dan, yes. Trustee Humphreys?
Yes.
Trustee Bintia? Well, trustee Stapleton, yes. President Greer?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the 2022 salary structure non to agenda item eight E, preliminary budget.
All right. I will tell you that this budget has a lot of placeholders in it that are pending more accurate estimates. As you know, our budget is due to the village by August 31st. So generally, we have, this is the first run to give you an idea of what's to come. Then I did gather your input, I give you another draft in July, and then we have a final budget that I present in August for your approval so that that levy request can be sent to the village. This year, we have the tip that is expiring in the downtown that will increase our EAV for sure. So our normal revenue estimates are very, very conservative. We usually estimate at about 1% increase in our EAV. For this year, we know for sure that it's going to be at least three. So we are, this preliminary budget contemplates trying to hold the tax rate steady and use fund balance. If we can manage to guess what that total EAV amount will be, we can increase the levy, but not increase the amount of tax to the individual taxpayer by holding that tax rate even. So if you can math, if you can guess what the EAV is going to go up by and levy that amount, then the tax rate stays flat for your individual taxpayer. That's really kind of what we're going for at this point.
Out of fairness, rates stays the same. Vow of the most. No attention.
Uh, no, if the tax rate is the same and your home's value has not changed, you will pay the same this year as you did last year.
Well, depends on when, when the assessments.
Yes, the EAV is.
Okay, number house, the spread costs. Depends on when the assessments.
Yeah.
Over time.
Yes, over time, your individual assessment will go up. It depends on if you got reassessed this year and what that assessment. There's also equalization factors and there are, there are so many moving parts to this, of which we have no control, so.
We, we basically would, we operate within this structure, but at the end of the day, we need a certain number. And then also, we've been eyeing what the EAVs are, you know, the type of taxpayers. I think the goal of keeping the rate is flat.
And that's, the, so the preliminary budget I've given you shows a 4.4% overall increase. On the personnel side, it's a 4.7%. Now, that has some placeholders for some reorganization within the library for public safety and for a couple of other positions that we're looking at making some changes in our organizational structure. So I did put some placeholders in there. We're still making some decisions about what we actually want. So I'm hoping to be a lot closer on those personnel numbers for you in July to have a better idea of what direction we're going to go with that. Now, this is where Jonathan was talking about merit increase. So the personnel lines are also showing a 3% increase across the board for staff. That's the 1.7% benchmark that's cost of living and then a 1.3% across the board merit increase. We had discussed doing a, implementing our merit increase system this year, but because a lot of the things that people get that our staff are evaluated on, a lot of the criteria that are in their job description that they would normally be evaluated on, didn't happen this year. I think the perfect case in point is our, in the children's department, we have an outreach services coordinator whose primary job is to be our liaison to the schools, to the daycares, to all those other child-centered entities around town. And a huge part of her job is going out and doing things with those partners. Well, a lot of our partnerships were not operating in, and their evaluation period is July of 2020 through June of 2021. So as you can see, that's not going to be a normal job year for anyone. So we decided to go ahead and do it across the board. For our non-personnel lines, they are representing a 3.5% increase that is primarily in materials, particularly electronic materials in response to the demand that we have had. But also some updates in non-personnel costs. As you know, for the last several years, we have held non-personnel budgets flat or almost flat. So this will be the first time in several years those will go up. And then the one other thing I wanted to mention is in the library capital replacement fund, outside of the capital needs assessment, we have put in an extra $100,000 in that proposed budget. It's kind of a placeholder. We need to do some changes to some workrooms, including and most specifically, the access services workroom that has a significant amount of cabinetry that is the same cabinetry we replaced in 2018 from the staff lounge because it was de-laminating. Well, guess what's happening in the access services department now? So, and we also have some overcrowding issues in children's and IT. We, we would like to plan, at least get that planned in 2022. We might not actually do the project in 22, might leave over in 2023. But, so that, again, a placeholder there. So my questions to you is, is this general direction okay with you? And is there anything specific you would like to see in the draft budget for July? Other than some word definitives for these placeholders.
I'll just say from my perspective, this is, I, I was going to say it's a good start. It's also a, work may end as well. I'm very, I'm very track here. I, I think just, just so that we can see the numbers, and you have that four and a half percent. Maybe you want it three and a half, you want it five and a half, just to see kind of what it looks like. But I also, I, I, I know that for the last few years, we, last year, we essentially held a budget flat, or close to it, and then years before, I think we've mostly been around two and a half to three percent. And so the fact that we're a little higher this year, let's say it isn't at four and a half, if you blend the rate over a few years, it's essentially the same, at quite around the rate we've really been kind of shooting for. And it just so happens, it's also the same year that the EAVs are going up. So it's, it's a, it's a good time to soften it.
And actually, because the levy has been lower, a lower percentage increase than the EAV, the tax rate has actually fallen every year since 2015, 2013, something like that. But at least the last five years, it has, our tax rate has fallen every year and we are currently lower than I believe the 2013, I put it somewhere, the 2013 tax rate. We are, in 20, for example, in 2027, the library's tax rate was 0.2202 and this year it was 0.203.
And my, my thought on that, I think, A, that's great for that five year period. Because the EAVs go the other way at some point too. And so it's just, you know, maybe, uh, we, we don't know. I think, I think we're, we're on, we've been doing a good job with the math side of this.
Well, I think the idea of keeping holding non-personnel levels flat, that's something that's probably covered on staff have adjusted rising costs of software and other services and materials and, that is things that we let go that we don't want to go up and, and raising up the role, our shoulders takes it sensitive for costs more now, I guess.
And particularly for materials budgets for, for cost of labor, so.
So one item that interested me, you have budgeted the dental charts, the afterglue charts go down.
Um, we.
And the pension chart.
We are working on, there was actually a, in the budget last time, I had included a percentage increase and I had not taken it out for the dental and the optical, so what we actually spent was less. So this, this is corrected and based on what we are actually expecting, anticipating.
That's why I don't know how you're doing that.
You also do a survey.
Who wants your answers?
Well, I, I don't know if it was in this budget or if it was maybe in your report later, but it also talked about our investments have not had produced interest.
Yeah, our interest has, has gone, had gone now in previous years. We're waiting to see what this year does.
Which is nice.
No, but it's, it's just the same back, basically.
So one year, I think I inquired, because I was like, I'd love to know where you're investing. It was like a 20 to 30% return or something.
The village does it.
I think, I think what you may have seen is that it was 20% more than prior year. But it was still like, it went to 2,000, it's now like 300, or something like that.
Okay.
So, but it's, it's been sitting in the bank right now, we're still okay.
Okay.
We're very.
The two things that I like to, I think, which I'm careful of, that's basically to, to smooth the curve a little bit over time. We were holding the line at a time when we needed to. We had an opportunity this year to keep the curve pretty smooth while upgrading materials budgets, rewarding our employees a little bit more in merit's kind of point of view, which we've been talking about for, for a long time. And yet, keeping this, the impact on taxpayers pretty smooth. Got a point I want to make, is that the reason the EAV is up is partly because the same thing's costing more, but partially because there are more things. And when there are more things, there are more customers and more demand for our services. So that's kind of the strength of that.
Does anyone else have any questions or thoughts regarding preliminary budget draft?
Does anyone else have any questions or thoughts regarding preliminary budget draft?
All right, so you would like to see it at the 3.5% levy and 5.5% or, I'm sorry, EAB increase.
Just wait. I love when you, this is, I mean, if you.
And hold the tax rate is, that's looking good for EAB.
So I think it looked, I mean, it did look good, I mean, from my perspective. I didn't dig into it, you can't open this much, just from a very big picture perspective, I'm very comfortable with the budget, with the budget standards.
Okay, direction of you did.
We're now onto agenda item 8F, we can invite a statements framework. Anyone shares a little background or?
Um, just in case, I know I referenced the positive and negative feedback in the packets. So just in case any of you wanted to look at it, I did give you the printouts. Those are just the emails that we received. That's not, none of the social media things are included in there. Those are just the emails that came to me, to the PR, or to the library board, or to any combination of those. As you know, we started in May of 2020 doing anti-hate statements. Our first one, it was actually issued on June 2nd of 2020. We have now issued four statements in all, and each of those has received positive and negative comments. Overall, we have had 12 negative comments that tended to be more general in nature. They tended to be statements that opposing the library making statements, opposing disagreement that the incident reference was hate, things of that nature. The positive statements were by and large very specific and personal. And I know that we have struggled with this topic sometimes. But the intent behind making anti-hate statements has always been about the library's commitment to being welcoming to all in the community. And you know, our purpose statement, a place for everyone to discover, role-play, and learn. And to be a place where everyone, everyone needs to know that they are welcome and that they belong here. So the primary reasons behind doing this, the number one why is to show support for our historically intentionally and traditionally marginalized people groups, to let them know that they are welcome and that the library is a safe space for them to be. As you can see, Cindy and Man have put together a wonderful set of guidelines here, the five Ws and H, so why, what, when, who, and how, open where. So they, I think they outline it very well. Drawing attention to hate incidents for groups that are experiencing violence or other kinds of discrimination. It does not exclude our support of others, and it doesn't deny that other groups have pain or are suffering. This is simply a statement of support that is directed at a specific group due to the environment that is happening at the time. And I think that these ladies did a wonderful job in talking about, who is the audience, when do we do these things, how is it written? One of the things that has come up numerous times in talking about our anti-hate statements is the naming of the problem, Jen, somebody just blocked it, and naming the specific issues at hand. By naming the problem, we acknowledge the root cause of harm in the community. And this, by naming it specifically, it helps those groups feel seen and validated. So we're really looking at, this is a statement, this is all about support. This isn't about everyone in the community. This is about a specific group and making sure that that particular group that is experiencing a crisis at the time knows that they are welcome and that they belong in the community. I'll be quiet and ask questions.
I would just throw a lot of it. Peace is also acknowledging and supporting the community and making them feel comfortable part of the school.
I think the, from my perspective, the difficulty, I think it was a very long written framework. Is, and this I think recently, is like at what point, who is deciding whether a community group is experiencing need for support? And there's certain situations out, sort of Floyd situation. Because I think our first statement was, it was just, it just was right there in front of you. You couldn't avoid it, rallies, non-trove. And I think we've ended at the right place with all of the statements, but it's still, the part that I get maybe less comfortable with is, like, what's the next issue? And even within this framework, someone could come up and say, you guys have a framework, it says you should be issuing the statement. We're in need, we are in need, why aren't you issuing the statement? And so I see the potential of the framework being used against us potentially. I'm not, I haven't, I'm still kind of working through the framework and how this can play out going forward. I will say from my own personal perspective too, these statements are really difficult. I look back, just, not because of this, but I just happened to be on The Village's website, and I saw the link to see, and I saw that there were 32 people that were looking to be on the library board, or no, they're agencies at the moment. But I was just clicking on the buttons to see, like, what does, how do people go through the process to apply to be on the board? And, which I didn't actually see a fire support. And the two questions they asked are, they said, are you interested in making the library a place of information with a wide variety of materials and access to resources for the community? Yes. Are you comfortable reviewing and approving annual budget and establishing the amount of property taxes to be collected to fund the library? Yes. Answering those two questions. These statements, I personally am just, I have to rely on other people to tell me, is this the right statement to be making at this point in time? Like, I just, and this is one of the reasons why I think it's hard sometimes to put a library trustee's name on these statements, because I don't know. I haven't been trained in these areas to know whether this is the right statement to be making at this point in time or not. So I don't know where that takes us, but those are, I think, kind of some of my concerns.
What I just heard you say is partially also how I thought of something, which was, we're much a leader in this area right now, in front of others. Where before I said, I don't see The Village making the same thing. Or my own employer did on, last summer. I was trying to think if, another one for the Asian community. But then after, I haven't seen any others out there. And so I think that's where we get feedback, because we're leading the charge. You were, you know, you were more in the realm of what others were all doing prior.
What is it, the, what area were you?
Oh, anti-hate statements, right?
In general?
Yeah.
A lot of other governmental organizations are doing that. The Village, Downers World is issues, many schools.
That's what I haven't seen.
Has, I mean, I don't know if they have, I don't. The Village certainly has, they had it on their website the last year.
Well, last year, that's what I said, but I've looked recently too to see.
What, do you think they've stopped, or do you think?
That's where I'm saying we're going to send farther than.
What, corporate America does it all the time.
Well, that's also what I was comparing it to. My own employer or other employers, where we've all had statements last summer and maybe once a send, but.
Well, I think from, for the firm that I'm with, we've basically made statements. I think for the same issues, maybe sometimes we've gone further, or sometimes we've, or maybe even made other statements about issues the library has not made at the time. The part that I get less comfortable, I'm not deciding on behalf of the firm whether the statement is made. We have people who are trained in doing this. And so it's, I still am at the firm and I'm represented by the statement, but it's the part that is, I'm part of the group that's deciding whether to make the statement or not. Again, some statements are just much more obvious, I guess, than others. So, I don't know, any other, any other thoughts?
I think, you know, like, to kind of go off what you're saying, I think that the threshold of where to say, you know, a statement's appropriate and where it isn't, I think is a difficult. And also, you know, it's one thing for a private entity or a private company to make a statement, but as a public agency, I feel like there's a little bit of a different, I think it just operates a little differently. But I think that also kind of, so.
Okay, I understand, I think it's, I think it's, it's one of the key parts. We have chosen as a board to move this process, the EDI, to add this new plan. We have chosen and made board to say this is a priority for us. So if our focus is to support this kid and, 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 then, I think that's where we need to focus, right? So that is the reason for doing that, really, we think, we thought we keep our audience on that. I think, I think that's the core of, then, I'm still, that's one of the areas of work, that, 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 line, and, 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 I think they are a leader. I mean, the statements, the things the library, the things that we are making, the notes not being, yes, in those case, statements, they think, I would say, they don't take this stance the way that we're taking it. And it's opportunity that we talk about in that, I think, training and, and, we write these things, we will be sending this page to the library to do things that no one wants to do. Even our library is talking to the state that we're doing. Right, they need a lot of to be proactive, the library to at least set itself apart from other departments, not just the network. So, I, you know, I think that, as we go through this, I think that one of the, going through the process of, like, you know, the biggest thing that we all feel about is that we just make this paper out, anti-hate the libraries, the state, and not the place. I think we've all talked through that thing. And that was something that, that I think that I was, I was struggling with when I spoke to all of you, that, that proved that I was struggling with whatever message that I needed, that I needed to be clear, and decided to go with it. So I think it's, I think it's an amazing opportunity, and it's a horrible thing for us to deal with the libraries, in the legal community, and to make a statement for the library.
Is there a way to maybe kind of steer our next EDI session towards, you know, the, getting everyone kind of the tools, like, the tools that we need to kind of sort through this process, this kind of, you know, flow chart of, like, what kind of statements, when to make statements, what, you know, I think that will be.
That is not what is normally, that we could.
Well, I would suggest we just add in another one, rather than, for somebody in Congress, maybe. Like either preceding or after someone other than, have a separate.
As important, the most important things here is under the why, the number three that they put in there, is also to model the behavior that we want to see in the community to be, again, as far as wanting to be that leader, by being the catalyst or champion in our community. By, the focus has been for communities that are in crisis, for those that are having a local or regional, national or international, often served in violence or hate speech directed toward that group. And to be able to directly say to the group that is experiencing that at the time, that you are welcoming the library and you are safe here. And that is the, that is the crux of the entire thing. And not to make statements about, you know, one, you know, there's one incident down in Arkansas that, you know, maybe makes the regional news. No, that it's, it's something that's larger, that is, that is impactful, that is really making that our staff, that our community is feeling that impact, that people within this community are feeling that impact that is making them feel like maybe they shouldn't go out in public right now. Maybe they should, maybe they have to be a little more careful about where they go. And making the statement at that time is what is crucial, to make sure that that group understands that they are welcome at the library, that we see them and we support them.
So I just wanted to say, Dan and Cindy did a great job of putting this together and outlining these questions in a really clear way. I learned a lot from seeing the answers to the questions that I wasn't necessarily, wasn't explicitly put out there before, as we were discussing various things. I thought that was really great. I, I'll, I'll go back to the thing that Jonathan was with, the what and when questions. Those, that, that section, for whatever reason, I feel a little bit uncomfortable about, because there is a element of deciding, the library deciding whether a community group is in crisis and whether they feel scared. And I'm not denying that certainly community groups are in crisis and that they feel scared in situations. But I don't, I don't know that. And I don't know, you know, these cases that have come up so far, they are like larger, you know, beyond just Downers World, this kind of incidents that have made the news and had other impacts. But I, but I just, I think about, well, when, when is, how do we, how do we know? And if a community group comes and says, oh, well, we're in crisis, you know, please show us where else, how do we weigh that? And how does that fit into this sort of framework?
And there seems like there's certain groups that are just, I mean, this is, this is bad. I mean, they're always discriminating against. I mean, always. And so, yes, maybe there is more in the news. But, so that's, that's where it just makes it hard. It's like, I don't even want to name groups, because they're all, maybe, there's certain groups that are just always, you know, singled out and targeted. And we can put out statements, you know, much more frequently to address those issues. But I'm just, it's very difficult to kind of, for me to know, you know, when to issue those statements.
And I'm happy to listen, you know, again, as, as we're hearing from, so from staff, I know that I was a big contributor for a couple of the last statements, hearing from staff that they felt they needed. I'm glad that that's, you know, that we're listening to that, hearing it, and understand where it's coming from. I just, I don't know, we're always going to get that kind of feedback, or we're always going to have this clearer sense as we, as we had maybe in the last examples that we addressed. I mean, I hope we don't, I mean, I don't have the, I'm like, oh yeah, that's the most egregious example.
And I am thinking about the statement about the anti-Asian hate. But that clearly was a, I wouldn't argue that that was, there was a clear uptick, essentially. That clearly was a, I wouldn't argue that that was, there was a clear uptick essentially, you know, as a result of kind of everything that was going on over the past year versus, I don't want to wade into too many issues, but where this brutality is kind of like maybe been more consistent versus the anti-Asian was kind of a, a new heightened level of, of hate that, you know, that, you know, as a result of.
Heightened awareness.
Yeah, exactly.
And that came to our attention, to our.
Yeah. Yes, I'm, I'm trying to think. I mean, we're trying to put together a checklist that we can use to decide and I'm not sure that.
I'm not sure that we can have, that very much like writing a policy. You can't write a policy that will cover every single eventuality out there in the world because, writing a public building, I'll tell you, will come up with something. And unfortunately for the world we live in, there will be, on end, it's going to be crisis. There will be things that we've never thought of, that, that no one ever could have guessed would happen. And when those things happen, we want to have a framework to be able to respond to them. I want to share with you a comment that was made at a Rails EDI committee meeting recently. And I will not name the person or the library from which they were, they're employed. But this particular library had taken steps forward in their EDI journey and then we stopped. And this was a staff member called, who said, I felt like they just left us in the dirt. And that is, since hearing that, that has resonated with me in all aspects of our EDI journey as a library that we can't stop because it would stop. To many of those people who are members of historically intentionally traditionally marginalized groups, it means we didn't stop to care. And I know that that is not what this library is about. We're about being a place for everyone. If we're going to be good on that, we have to keep going. Whether this framework is the right one for us right now, whether we want to make some changes, start with this and see where we wind up. Maybe let this ride and see, you know, what happens next? What, what is the next crisis? And does this, having this in front of you, does that make the process easier when staff brings forward another possible statement?
Kind of like the term framework, I think is appropriate. I, I, I heard a little bit of rumbling, it sounded more like a checklist. And I, I wouldn't, I'm not comfortable with that. Framework, it's starting to help you focus your thoughts on something, but there's always going to be something new about it or something. And I don't want to strifle the staff and us from. I mean, it doesn't fit all these three things we can't do. I don't want to do that if it, that doesn't mean we don't look at these three things and consider. But I'm not sure that we can, we're in that tighter frame. But I'm not sure that we can put it into that tighter framework. And I work, what, as an individual and as a member of the community, that strings on spot. Or you can necessarily, so I'm sure we have four of you. You want to afford it. You may have now one for three years.
Well, and if you look at it as 2020 versus 2021, you had one in three.
Well, yeah.
And hopefully three is all we need in 2021.
Well, if you just, well, if number four comes along, I'm going to be right up there saying that we should do it. But, but I would just add to it that I don't think any of us are saying, "Let's stop EDI." I mean, this, this is when we issue statements and try and get more comfortable with that process of life. So.
I think the goal, you know, is also just for us to feel comfortable representing.
Exactly.
Yeah, so I think this, this is a great framework. It really does, you know, even just looking at this and then reflecting back on statements we released has been helpful. You know, and I, I agree that I don't think there can ever be a hard checklist or even a soft checklist. I think it does provide a good kind of veron or if you kind of go through the questions as the next arrives. And, you know, I mean, maybe in the future we'll need to add extra, you know, statements to this. It's not, it's not the only reason.
I, I personally would like to, I would rather, like, people formal rule shares. We all have a statement of something we're going to come up with the next month. We still have this as a guide to see, you know, to, to, you know, go forward. But I, I think, and I, and I was thinking about this as I was going through the board materials, is that I was, I was thinking about that, how this is actually, to me, much more important and more difficult than the budget process. Because this is, these issues are much broader and, you know, it just, it... So I, and that's why I think this, I was thinking about that coming into the meeting, that I think with the budget, it's not. This one's much more difficult to, I just want to work through.
Why, why is it... I'm sorry, I'm double-talking. Why? Are there, are there, are we saying there are degrees of hate? No, but I, I don't, you haven't, you haven't listened to what I've said. I mean, I've said why it's difficult. I don't know when we should issue statements.
Because when we submit the budget, you don't get this many.
When should we not? I'm not sure, I'm, I'm just double-talking.
Julie just said, there was one incident, now and on the inside. Should we issue a statement?
Well, the statement's called "single phase of" clearly it is. That is the case.
But does it, but is it a single incident that is local to a specific area? Or is it something like the George Floyd murder that sparks an entire movement throughout the country? You know, there, you don't know what you're going to get. And I think that, that just having a framework to work from and, and having kind of these guidelines so that you can have it in your mind when the staff brings the next one.
Which we have maybe had.
So now you, so now you've got it. You don't necessarily have to approve it. You don't necessarily have to approve the next statement that we bring to you. I can't tell you what, what's going to be the impetus for the next one. And, and I think the when being kind of amorphous is because that's the goal we live in.
And I'm also arguing, like, why, I mean, how do you put it on the board? Why haven't we had a statement? Why is it, I mean, I, I would like an extra month or two to actually process a statement. You haven't had a statement. This is a brand-new statement.
Yeah.
We, we, we saw the budget for the first time in a month ago.
You're talking about this framework?
Yes.
I'm not opposed to this framework. Okay. Yeah. I, I, I've sensed that there's some resistance to issuing statements at all.
You've approved four statements.
I know. But is that enough?
I don't know.
Like, hey, no, do you know?
I don't know either, but I don't, I, I was sensing in the, in the discussion, I'm not talking about community. If you're doing something right, you're always going to get it. But I feel strongly that the library has not only the ability and the right responsibility to issue statements of this sort when appropriate. Now, when are they appropriate? Do we have to? I'm not sure you can create a book of rules.
They, they, I, I agree with you. How many statements were issued during your entire tenure up until last June?
The library chose not to do that in the past. Not because of me, but I think there was no... I don't believe the College of Dollar's Road issued any statements until George Floyd issued. The world's changed with it. And maybe it's... I'm not trying to say that it wouldn't have been appropriate before, but it, for some reason, it wasn't done. But that doesn't mean we should do it now.
Just to, to be able to point your finger on it, if the library didn't do it before, but now we do, as a board, have taken a chance to do different and to learn different and to be better. When you know better, you do better. And that's what we're doing. So we know better now, so we're doing better now. And so I think that is, I mean, that's even the thing, right? We're going through this, this whole process as a board and as a library and training. Now we know. And so what we did in the past, we did in the past. And now together, we're going to take forward and doing better. So I did, I mean, I think that's, I think this framework is exactly what we need. Because once if and when something happens, then we as a board are saying, "If the staff comes up with something, okay, let's go into this framework. Do we think this is something we should be making a statement on, right? And if we, if we use the framework as historically and intentionally marginalized groups, then we know that's obviously the case, right? I mean, that's, that's, that's what I'm, you're in the same thing. And so I, I just feel like back to the beginning, when you know better, you do better. And that's how I kind of come to it in my work.
But, 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 all I was, all I was responding to was the fact that I've seen this statement for the first time. I would like to table it so I can review it. It's a, it's a much more important issue to me.
Oh, I agree. I agree with that. I totally agree with that. Yeah, I totally agree. I think that, I don't, I don't think there's something to be like, I think, I don't think there's something to be like, make a stat just to not, I mean, the policy that we all do, we all do. But I absolutely agree with you on that.
Okay. That's, that was my only, that was, that was why I was saying.
What a procedure, like, so approving this, what does it mean? I mean, like, and, and so we let these programs, and I would do it, and that's one of the things we're not bad about. What does, what does it mean?
It just means that those are the guidelines that we follow. And like any policy, it is something that you can change at any time as a board. You don't even have to approve it or not. This was simply to get, we put it on as an action item to get consensus.
Yeah, well, like I said, I really like the idea of being able to, you know, take, hopefully not the next, but the next incident and be able to really, like, work through these questions. Since I think we were asking ourselves versions of these questions as we were carrying conversations and installing security mails and working through what this means for us as a board and a library. And I really liked that. I just, I wasn't sure, like, what approving them changed, except for having kind of on the record. Is that important or?
Yeah, yes.
So if we published it, I guess, in the EDI, I guess, part of the West Side or something like that?
As if we approved it, it could be posted on the EDI table.
It would be helpful for the public to also be able to understand.
The staff, yeah.
I thought the same, yeah, that's what I was saying.
Like, you, for, published it.
I like, I like the idea of the, because some of the questions as far as why are we issuing statements? You can say, "This is why we should issue statements."
But you, you kind of said that before. I mean, Julie's article in the Discoveries a month ago was one way to say it. This is another way to say it. And I, forgive me, but I don't like the term guidelines. I like the term framework. It's a framework that we can help to use to focus our discussion to decide whether something is right or not. For that. And I think it's a good thing to have.
And, and I can assure you, and I hope, I hope nothing happens within the next month that requires to consult a framework, but I would consult a framework regardless of, you know, whether it's payable or not payable. I think it's a good, it's excellent framework to work through the process.
And there is absolutely nothing wrong tabling it and giving yourself time to study it, to think about it. And I can even talk to Rashida, RGW Consulting, about, you know, if, what it would, if they would be able to facilitate a discussion around that if they felt that that would be something helpful, we could possibly put that in the fall sometime.
When you come set off of it, we can talk about it a little more next month, too. We could, we could, it was, but, okay, I, I, I kind of apologize if I came off. I, I think that was, I really, as long as I'm a member of this board, I can defend the right of us to do what we have done. And encourage the board to continue that. That was a big issue with that, some words, frameworks, considerations.
You know, I was just going to mention that, I'm going to do this personally, was take the interrogatories of the framework and compare that to our existing statements to see how well we did and to see what that actually looks like. Because seeing the interrogatories without actually having a statement adjacent to it or comparing it, it's, it's nebulous and vague and it's, it's really hard to process. So I was just going to recommend that might be helpful to do.
And I think maybe a secondary side effect of having a framework to do work through and prove it would be, you know, actually freeing our time and staff time to actually be doing more, to do, to do more than statements and actually building beyond the framework to going out and interacting with people and going, you know, for all the stuff that we do with them and be better. It's maybe a freedom to do that because we have some things to say, "Okay, right, we can do this." We know kind of how to ask ourselves these questions. Let's move on to continuing for work that we're also doing alongside us.
Okay, do we have any additional very robust discussion on the board? Do we have any additional questions or thoughts on the framework? Or I think either a motion to table?
If you simply choose not to make any motion at this time, I will just bring it back to you.
Okay, I see what I need to just, you talking about, who's not going to talk?
Okay, we're now on agenda item 9A, COVID-in response to days reopening plan.
So June, between the end of school and June 11th, we've had a huge uptick in visits and a very large reduction in unhappy patrons about the masking issues. We've really only had one who did not want to wear a mask in the kids' room. But beyond that, people have been great. It's been wonderful. So most of the furniture is back. We've actually, if you look around, we've made some changes to some placement of furniture. And you'll see things continue to come back over the next few weeks. July 5th, we will be most of our way to normal full hours. We should have all, you know, of the furniture out by then. And then curbside service will close. They keep telling us that our pickup drivers are coming. They say they're going to give us a week's notice. We're still waiting. They told, the last we talked to them, they said end of June, but they were going to give us a week's notice. So obviously, that's not going to happen. So, yeah. And then in the fall, you will see the return of in-person programming beginning in September. And then also, we will, around that same time period, be opening the meeting rooms for public use again. However, it will be very limited because we will, due to social distancing requirements for the kids, this will be the primary role for children's programming as well as all of our meetings, the foundation, the equity advisory teams, board, staff meetings. So this meeting will, the meeting room will be getting a lot of use. So look for that all coming back in the fall. And while we will still be having some, some policies and procedures that are changing, so we ask for the reauthorization yet again.
All right. With that, do we have a motion to approve agenda item 9A, COVID-in response to days reopening plan? As presented. Sorry. All right. We have a, and a third. Okay, we have a motion to approve agenda item 9A, COVID-in response to days reopening plan? As presented, and seconded. Caitlin, can you receive the roll call?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee McGurn?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Quintia?
Yeah.
Trustee Staples-Handz, trust me, favor.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved agenda item 9A. We're now on to 10, the library recording board.
So this month has been very much about our equity work. As you know, we had our Pride Month events going on, both in the downtown and at the library. We got some really great response from the community. There were some bumps in the road as well. The pronoun program earlier in the month garnered a lot of attention, but also a lot of folks who attended. And that is still available as a virtual program. So if you want to watch the recording, it is very, very, it's a really interesting program. If you don't know a whole lot about pronouns and why it's important and how we use them properly. Pastor Andy did a wonderful, wonderful job. They are obviously a very good speaker, getting up and, and doing sermons. So it was a perfect person to handle the questions that came out. And it was a really great forum to allow folks to ask any questions that they had. We had all sorts of wonderful handmade crafts for Pride. We had our buttons in the Pride picnic baskets. The window painting is lovely. One of our Ali's daughters helped with, was one of our artists on the kids' room windows. So make sure you take a look if you haven't looked at the ones on our kids' room. And, oh, there was another one I was going to talk about, it's still not present.
The windows, where you go around and find the parents.
Yes.
It's been a neat, see the community together. And I, I've done that with my kid and I've seen plenty of people doing it.
Yes, and so that has been just amazing. It's been a great month. And then, of course, I'll represent, our two congressmen, Bill Foster and Sean Caston, came out to talk to us about our EDI work, the EQDG group that partnered with us on the Pride events in downtown and throughout the village. And it was a wonderful conversation about the leadership role as a library is taking and about the importance of equity work in making the library that warm and welcoming place, that safe place for all members of our community. You know, it's one of those things about librarianship that we, we say we're equal access for all. We've always had this kind of great equalizer, people's university thing going on. But when you look at the history of actual public libraries in the United States, they were primarily started by your ladies associations, not your groups. So it was primarily started by middle and older class white women. And whether there were overt rules or simply norms and other factors that excluded use by other groups, that happened for many, many years. In the GIPRO South, you know, the GIPRO laws would, would say, you know, you know, black people in places like this, they would simply locate the library in a place that was inaccessible. And so there were many, many different ways in which, you know, that was maybe not overtly written, but, you know, this was a sundown community. And so that is the history that we are dealing with and that we are coming from and have to do better because we know better. So it was wonderful to talk to the representatives about all this work that we're doing and all the work that we plan to do and our partnerships. We have some really amazing partners out there. Oh, now I remember what the other thing I was going to say about the Pride we did. It was actually our first outreach event in 2021, probably since March of last year. Staff went to the Pride in the Parking Lot event that kind of, that was directed toward LGBTQ plus youth that was held in the First United Methodist Parking Lot. And that was our first, first event. So it was really great to get out and, and see kids in person. So, you know, Erin and Amanda, our, our kids' outreach coordinator and our team librarian, were very involved in making sure that that happens. It was, it was a really great event. So lots of, lots of good stuff going on right now.
I'm going to just tag a couple of great things as a part of the evening. Trustee Tom, but the two things, two things that she was alluding to, one is the Pride in the Parking Lot event. The library had a display and they did Storytime. And they had a whole bunch of kids sitting on the pavement in front of this display and library staff members reading to them and holding up books and, and passing out books and asking the kids to look at the books and ask questions about them. It was a very interactive thing. And I was, pardon me, saying it, but I was very proud to be part of the event. Our library was showcased and we got it. The meeting we had in this very room with Congressman Bill Foster and Sean Caston, it was, on the surface, an opportunity for them to listen to the EQDG Pride people and library people talk about EDI up in the university. But I was amazed at, either they were well primed or they do homework well. One of them lives in Dollar's Road, sees it a lot, Sean Caston. But they were telling us on several occasions about thanking the library for taking the leadership in some of these areas. The Pride Month stuff, the EDI, just starting the EDI discussion a year ago. Who else was doing that? And they knew that and they were thanking the library for taking the leadership in some of this. So it was a really wonderful discussion.
Can we finish with the library?
I apologize.
We've worked our way into agenda item 9. Do we have any additional trustee comments or question information?
So did you have your first outdoor program on Wednesday this week? Or maybe?
Actually, it was, yeah.
Okay, so how were outdoor programs?
So I attended that, it was Storytime, and it was excellent. There were about 15 attendees there.
Yes, so great. I mean, I think it's one thing they can stick, you know, just spread to the outside of the building. Just like restaurants. And then I was wondering if Busy Bee were to reopen. I thought I'd plant the seed. But like, what I've loved in the community that happened last summer when Places First started, they boarded up. You know, people were hauling wood to each other for other stores, right? And helping each other out. And when they had to get chairs and tables and things out there, they were all helping each other. And I know seeing things in front of Busy Bee is neat. And if they were to reopen, could we try to do something too? Like, you know, on the front end, for you just letting people know, "Just reopen here." Or do-it-yourself kits, like, you know, put a beer or something, you know? Just, that was an idea that I planted the seed.
We always try to support our local businesses, especially our downtown businesses. They are, they have been wonderful, wonderful partners throughout the years. And right now, you know, 24 businesses throughout Dollar's Road have the crayons as part of our scavenger. It's awesome.
And Pierce Tapper did a fundraiser?
Yes.
We partnered with Summer League of Streets in North Street, Top Corn for our big Fox Awards.
And all the summer reading classes and everything.
Every day.
Sunday and TIBLAE and, yeah.
Every day is a Sunday and the TIBLAE and all of these that have been involved, especially in our summer reading prizes and that sort of thing. It's, it's a wonderful community that we have. We do support our business community as much as they support.
So, any additional trustee comments or request of information? Okay, and we're on to agenda item 12, and I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, everyone.